The City of New Britain. Building hope together for a greater community.
I'd like to call to order the public participation session of the regular meeting of the Common Council Wednesday, June 14th. The time is now 7:00 PM. I'll just remind anyone who's signed up to speak, you will have three minutes. The first name is Antoine Williams. Mr. Williams, come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Antoine Williams. 16 Mead Street, New Britain, Connecticut.
Go ahead, sir.
All right, my question here is, I've recently been going through court for the last two years, dealing with a water bill with the city of New Britain, Connecticut. And as an end result, after the two years of finding out, there was a letter discharged and my lawyer got it and it was stated after they came through and changed my meter that I was overcharged $21,000 for water usage. I had a $21,000 bill that McQ Mortgage took over and paid it, and after they paid it, we thought everything was cleared up. And when we went to do a modification of my loan, another bill for $32,000 came up. And this is in the course of eight years. And during the course of that, I got a bill. My bill was $5,000. It went from $5,000 to $20,000. That's when I called and said, this can't be my bill. Cannot be my bill. So I went through it with the lawyer for the water department and I basically got nowhere with him. So then it went into foreclosure. That's when the banks got involved and they paid the $21,000. And I was just gonna let it be there. I was gonna say, okay, if it's $21,000, I just take it into a modification and I'll take it over or let's let it be. Let's just continue owning my home that I've been in for 10 years. During that course, when I was getting ready to sign the modification for the $21,000, another bill came in for $32,000. That's when I had to get lawyers involved and had to come out of my own pocket. I couldn't represent myself downtown anymore because it was a bigger issue than I can resolve. Well, anyway, my lawyers determined, and it got found out after we had a meeting down here and we tried to talk it over and they was like, okay, well, on the $32,000, we'll make a deal on that, but what about the $21,000 that I was overcharged? And also, at the end result, they know it's not my bill. The bank issued McQ Mortgage, which is my bank, we paid the $21,000. So we want our money back, whether it's you or them. We paid it out, you owe. And I'm like, well, I didn't owe it, like I told you guys not to pay it. So my question here is, what can my city do for me, a homeowner, to get me my funds back that I was overcharged?
So, Mr. Williams, the way the public participation works, you can address us. It's not a time for question and answer. We'll definitely, someone will talk to you after the meeting and we can talk about how we can proceed from here, but we can't go back and forth and call public participation.
That's why I'm here, though. That's why I came in and I talked with a couple of guys and said, well, you need to go down and let the Aldermen know and address it with the city and maybe you can get a favorable ear there, you know, so that's why I'm here.
Okay. So we'll talk in between this and the regular meeting, someone will come. Thank you. The next name, Christiana Smith.
Hi, I'm Christiana Smith. I live at 160 Washington Street. I have just been selected as one of 24 creatives in the country to participate in National Arts Strategies Creative Community Fellowship. It's a fellowship that focuses on using a creative tactic to try and make your community better. The project that I'm working on, if you see me coming to a few of the meetings, is how to use civic engagement theater to make policymaking more accessible to the community at large. So I'm just up here to say that I'll be emailing all of you. I'm interested in your ideas of what you believe makes a engaged citizen, what makes an informed citizen. So when you get my email, please respond, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? For a second time, is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? For a third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to address the council? Hearing none, I'll close this public participation session. The time is now 7:05. Are there any alderpersons who would like to speak about anything from public participation? Okay, hearing none, we will start the regular meeting shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the New Britain Common Council on June 14th, 2017. The time is 7:14 PM. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
All the persons. G. Antonio.
Here.
Smedley.
Present.
Carlosi.
Here.
Black.
Present.
Collins.
Present.
Davis.
Here.
Hargraves.
Here.
Naples.
Here.
Babone.
Here.
Polkowski.
Here.
Rosato.
Here.
Salvio.
Here.
Sanchez.
Present.
Sanders.
Present.
Salerno. 12 present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much for the record, if that would know. If no one else wants to say it, I will. Alderman Sanchez is home ill this evening. Alderman Salerno is somewhere in the west of the United States. We're not quite sure where, but he is enjoying a little...
Standing on the corner of Winslow, Arizona.
Enjoying a little vacation. And Alderman Hargraves is not here this evening because he is currently in Denver as the city is an All-America City finalist for a second time. And Alderman Hargraves is representing our government in hopes that we bring home the title for a second year in a row. So you go, Jerome. Yeah. We find out Friday afternoon, so fingers crossed. We'll be posting like crazy when we find out. The focus for this year is a grade level reading. And everybody knows we've been, have great successes with our grade level reading campaign. So we're hoping that that will translate into another banner for us. We can hang proudly in the hallway. So that's where they are. Can we all please rise for the invocation, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegion.
Let us pray. Oh God, our heavenly Father, we give thanks for the fathers in our lives. Some fathers are still with us and share their love, wisdom, and compassion that only dads can provide. Other fathers have been taken from us, but our memories of their love, protection, sage advice, time, and family events burn ever strong. We remember that many sacrifices our fathers made for us and the ways they believed in us and inspired us to achieve our dreams and give us strength during life's challenges. We ask this in thy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alderman G. Antonio, for minutes.
Thank Your Honor. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 26, 2017, and the regular meeting of May 10, 2017.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Sanders. Any discussion on the minutes changes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Amendments.
Thank Your Honor. One amendment to the agenda. I make a motion to amend the agenda by adding Resolution Number 11.
Second.
Resolution Number 11 added, seconded by Alderman Smedley. Any questions, comments? We all have a copy of that. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
All the persons. G. Antonio.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Carlosi.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Naples.
Yes.
Babone.
Yes.
Polkowski.
Yes.
Rosato.
Yes.
Salvio.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
12-0, Your Honor.
Motion carries. The, we have been amended petitions.
We have one, Your Honor, from Alderman Jamie G. Antonio. Jace Auto Sales and Repair LLC seeks granting of a certificate of location approval from the Common Council in order to allow a motor vehicle dealer and general repairs license for property at 866 West Main Street.
Thank you very much. That's going to refer to city plan and the zoning committee.
That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, onto the consent agenda.
Thank Your Honor. I'm not aware of any items being asked off of consent.
C.
Okay, C. So therefore, Your Honor, I make a motion to accept a consent agenda consisting of items A, B, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, and Q. So A through Q with the exception of C.
C for Carlosi. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk?
Is there a second?
There was a second by Alderman Salvio.
Great, thank you. All the persons. G. Antonio.
Yes.
Smedley.
Yes.
Carlosi.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Naples.
Yes.
Babone.
Yes.
Polkowski.
Yes.
Rosato.
Yes.
Salvio.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
12-0, Your Honor.
Motion carries. Thank you. Report C, Alderman Carlosi.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept report C, please.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman G. Antonio.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a report on cooperative purchasing, copier lease for the New Britain Finance Department. And, Your Honor, through you, I believe our finance director is here, and I'd like to ask some questions.
You got it. I think she knows where you're going with it.
Good evening. Good evening. How are you?
It's only because he wasn't here for the budget meeting.
Yeah, I was given, I was given extra time tonight, Your Honor, because I...
You got it, Alderman.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, you know, these leases on copiers, it's one of those things that it seems like we're always leasing a copy for this department, for that department, for this other department. They all have different rates, they all have different usages. Was it last year, Your Honor? I believe that Public Works actually put together for us a report on all of our autos and trucks and equipment and all, everything like that. Can you talk to me about what we're doing to ascertain exactly what we have for inventory on leases throughout the building?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Couple of months ago, the mayor asked the Finance Department if we would assign one person to go ahead and project manage every single lease that we have for copiers, fax machines, phones, anything that needs to be leased. The project's halfway done. We probably have about two months left to go, and then we'll be providing the mayor and the council with a report. But right now, regarding this purchase, this lease, the Finance Department's, probably 50,000 pages a month we go through, and you can imagine what the repairs cost on a big, huge piece of equipment. So the reason we decided to lease this for another five years at a cost that's less than 10 bucks a month over what it's been for the past four or five years is because the repairs are just too costly and it didn't make any sense to go out, purchase anything else.
Great. Well, that's, that's good to know. I mean, hopefully, at the end of the day, we can look at all the different data that we get and make a determination if there's some way to be a little more efficient and if we can get out of some leases or if we can just non-renew for some areas where we may have just more leasing, more leasing equipment, more leased copier equipment than we actually thought we had, so...
And to determine who needs them, who doesn't.
And who doesn't.
How many desktops we have, how they're being used, so we're doing a full and complete study.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Your Honor.
That is an arduous task, so thank you, with the amount of equipment that we have. Thanks, Alderman. Carlosi. With that being said, we'll move on to Resolution Number One. Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor, report C, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Sanders, you're up.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept and adopt Resolution Number One.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman G. Antonio.
Your Honor, this is a good neighbor resolution, I like to call it. Because of our city charter, Article 13, Section 3, we need the mayor and council approval for leases and other dispersments of city land. The town of Berlin has to make repairs to the High Road Bridge, so this is gonna grant them an easement. They're also compensating us $2,782 for that easement, so I urge adoption. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments on this lease to our neighbor in Berlin? It is a voice vote, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Alderman Naples.
Your Honor, I move to accept and adopt Resolution Number Two.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman G. Antonio.
This is a resolution to recognize Flag Day, which happens to be today. 101 years ago, President Wilson established it, so, and we've been doing it every year. It gets a little less popular each year. Speaking personally, having just come back from Norway where everybody puts their flag out every day, we can do it on one day. I know our president's birthday, he might claim that we're doing it for him, but wait out. And note that the town and city clerk had a proper tie today, so I urge adoption.
Thank you, Alderman Naples.
Huge.
Kudos to Mr. Clerk.
They're all flying for him.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution Number Three, Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept and adopt Resolution Number Three.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Smedley.
Thank you. This recognizes June as Immigrant Heritage Month. It's no secret that New Britain is a city of immigrants, a very diverse population, and I urge adoption. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution Number Four, Alderman Rosato.
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to accept and adopt Resolution Number Four.
Seconded by Alderman Collins.
Resolution Number Four has to deal with June 2017 as National Caribbean American Heritage Month, whereas in June 2006, President George W. Bush signed a resolution after a multi-year effort by the Institute of Caribbean Studies to recognize the valuable contributions Caribbean people and their descendants have made in the United States. So I urge adoption. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Smedley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to accept and adopt Resolution Number Five.
Second, Your Honor.
Seconded by Alderman Carlosi.
Thank you. This resolution is for a budget transfer and appropriation for the police department. Just some important facts about speeding in 2016. In the state of Connecticut, 51% of speed crashes occurred during the weekends. 56% of fatally injured speeding drivers crashed between the hours of 8:00 PM and 6:00 AM. This is a grant from the state of Connecticut DOT to enforce our speed monitoring in low speed limit areas between July and September. So please don't speed in our city and stay safe. I urge adoption.
Thank you, Alderman. Questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Carlosi.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept and adopt Resolution Number Six.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Collins.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a renewal for software license, COT, systems for the town clerk's office. This is something that we entered into resolution back in January of 2008. We extended it again in June of 2014 with a period ending in June of 2017, and therefore this is, this will extend that out to 2020. This is a software product that we use. It's the digital backbone to the town clerk's office, providing indexing, scanning, point-of-sale processing, microfilming, licensing, and internet access. And among the items that this has been doing for us, there's a few of them, there's seven. It's added public 24/7 off-site access to over 1 million land records, implemented 24/7 off-site access for marriage license applications, implemented new Tobi Trax dog licensing software for annual licensing and access for the New Britain Police Department, implemented 24/7 off-site public access for all common council action items, implemented 24/7 off-site public and city hall access for foreclosure registration forms. Number six, implemented the indexing and tracking of 30C workman's compensation claims for corporation council and the city's insurance carrier. And finally, it's installed license software on all scanning stations to continue preserving and making documents available to the public. And it's an item that's been in their budget, so I encourage that we, the adoption of this resolution. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman. I'm sure Mr. Clerk will attest, much needed and very necessary for your essential functions.
No typewriters.
No typewriters anymore. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Smedley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to accept and adopt Resolution Number Seven.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Rosato.
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will permit our purchasing agent to execute an agreement with quality perspectives for bioterrorism and emergency preparedness planning. This also includes the funding for an emergency preparedness coordinator, and I would like to note that this is a female-owned company who has a great relationship with our health department. They have worked with the city and the health department and New Britain EMS since about 2011, and we would like to continue this. They need to execute deliverables for the state grant, so, thank you. I urge adoption.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Collins.
Thank you, Your Honor. Make a motion to accept and refer Resolution Number Eight to the Planning, Zoning, Housing Committee.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman G. Antonio.
Thank you. Resolution Eight has to do with amending the Code of Ordinances to change the rules concerning the charge for the Fire Prevention Bureau inspections and permits. There's some changes to different fees in order to get different permits, and it's all outlined in the resolution, and I urge referral. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman G. Antonio.
Thank Your Honor. Motion to accept and adopt Resolution Number Nine.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Babone.
Thank Your Honor. This resolution authorizes the city in New Britain to submit a grant in the amount of $2 million for responsible growth in transit-oriented development projects around Columbus Boulevard, Chestnut Street, Elm Street, and the Harriest Truman Overpass, all surrounding the new development that's happening in our old police station, making it, you know, more livable, attractable, walkable, and bikeable downtown area, and I urge adoption.
A lot of obols. A lot of obols. Thank you very much, Alderman. We would find out if we received this grant in a couple of months, fingers crossed, $2 million is a lot of money. That would make a large impact on our study and development of those areas, so... All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman G. Antonio.
Thank Your Honor. Motion to accept and adopt Resolution Number Ten.
Seconded by Alderman Davis.
Thank Your Honor. This has to do with allowing the mayor to execute an agreement with C Click Fix. This is $22,979 annually. C Click Fix is a software and app company that will basically, you know, more innovation in our city, connect our residents with city hall, basically what it is. You see a pothole, you take a picture of it, you upload the picture, it uses the GPS to report back to Public Works or whoever that, hey, there's a pothole here, letting our Public Works Department or whoever is responsible for the issue know that it needs to be fixed. The person who submits will then have a way of seeing, you know, what the progress is, when it's gonna be fixed. It can also be used for blight complaints or anything like that. It's a free app that folks can use, and, you know, I think it's just another way to show that the city is innovating and trying to connect city hall with the people of New Britain, and I urge adoption.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Any questions? Alderman Carlosi.
Thank you, Your Honor. This sounds like Public Works.
Yes, certainly has to do with it.
So, Your Honor, through you, to Mr. Moriarty.
Kind of, unless Adam wants to come up, too. I'm not sure, Adam maybe, all right.
Oh, I gotta, I gotta pick.
Well, it's kind of, it's got an IT component, and Justin's really been the one that's taken the lead on it. Do you want me to give you a little history?
Your Honor, if you don't...
Go for it.
I would, I would probably, probably prefer to hear it from you, but I'm gonna ask these gentlemen, since, you know, since they distinguished, they honored us with their attendance tonight, so, Director Moriarty, can you give us a background on C Click Fix? And I'm sure from there we'll have other questions.
Well, so we brought in some different technologies over here, but the thing about C Click Fix is that this has pretty much been established as the best-in-breed app for dealing with citizen complaints. And from my standpoint, it's a great way to communicate things back and forth from a resident to the city, close a loop on things. Something like a pothole, I mean, I know even from alderpersons, I'll get emails about potholes regularly. I have to, I then forward that email to whoever else on my team gets that. If I wanted to get a response to you, they need to send, get the work done, send a response to me, and I need to contact you. The steps involved in that are just, there's a fair amount of steps. This automatically would address those kind of things, and you could take a picture of it on the spot. The information could get forwarded to you, our person on site can respond that it was completed, the loop will be totally complete. And this, I just look at this as a great tool for the city for any of the kind of things that we do that are really public service, from tree complaints to potholes to other similar type issues we deal with.
So, on the surface, it sounds great. How many other companies out there that do this kind of work, and how was this company picked over others?
Well, these guys are the, I mean, they're in Hartford, New Haven, Philadelphia, Dallas, they're in every con except in Arkenhold, and they've, they're a Connecticut-based company, and basically, they've exploded. I mean, they're, they're, they're kind of, they're a young company, forward-thinking. Everybody, apps are how we manage a lot of our lives more and more. This is an app that is user-friendly, and that's really what you need in this day and age to address, you know, a useful app that people like regularly go to on their phone because they know it has a purpose. And this, this app for C Click Fix has established themselves as like, that's the one to go to, you know? And what's, it is in so many other Connecticut communities and so many other communities around the country, it just let the app that people would think of, oh, I have a resident complaint, it's probably gonna be C Click Fix in this community. I mean, if we went a different way, it'd be like going, not using Microsoft, we'd be using some other product that isn't. It just kind of, it doesn't make sense to not use that premier.
So you mentioned Hartford, New Haven. Are there a number of other municipalities in the state?
Enfield, Meriden are both, they're also on it. I mean...
So how do we get, how do we get the word out to the public? How do, I mean, they have to download an app onto their phones, I would imagine.
Yep.
And are they using data when they're actually sending something over the app?
It's like any other app in the world.
Okay.
It's, yes.
Okay. How, Your Honor, how are we going to get the, since you want to, I know you want to chime in here.
I'm like chomping at the bit to chime in here.
So, I think it's great. I mean, I think this is great. I mean, I know oftentimes I will see something, I take a photo of it, I send it to a department head and said, hey, what are we gonna do about this, or what can we do about it? And I copy your office on it as well, Your Honor. So this is obviously the way to go. My question is, how are we going to educate? And that's really why I'm getting up to ask all these questions, is because I think it's important that people, other than us, just quickly approving this and moving on, it's like, what are we going to do to educate people about the use of this and how valuable it will be?
So I think, and Justin, you can chime in if you know more than I do on this, but I, once we sign the contract, we'll start the conversation with C Click Fix about developing our app that's specific to New Britain for our needs. It can also do a lot more than just Public Works, but we can get into that. First foremost, we want to start off with having it able to, it's that, it's that feedback component, right? Where the citizen can actually see in real time where their complaint is, when it's gonna be addressed, if, whether it's been addressed and know that it's taken care of. But developing that also comes with a communications and an education component that C Click Fix is also responsible for helping develop for us, much like the simple recycling contract that we signed as well with that educational component, letting people know that we're gonna offer this service. That's in part of C Click Fix's responsibilities as well.
So do we have a, like a lot, do we have an idea of when we're gonna, actually, this is actually gonna go live?
The contract goes in effect July 1st.
Okay.
We hope by, you know, that end of August, everything will be done, if not earlier. Included in the price, aside from the maintenance and all that other stuff, is the marketing with it, so they're gonna help us get the work out. And like the mayor said, this is gonna lead to so much more. You know, we're gonna be able to use it for forms of blight complaints. We'll be able to send reverse messages to let people know there's a parking van, so they'll get a notification that pops up right in their phone, they're not even gonna have to open the app. You know, these other programs that we're currently using for building department or even the tax department, when these contracts expire, we'll be able to incorporate these services in...
They're not even going to have to open it yet. You know, these other programs that we're currently using for building department or even the tax department, when these contracts expire, we'll be able to incorporate these services into this app at no additional charge. So in the long term, it's just going to save the city money and obviously create more communication between the residents and City Hall.
Well, Your Honor, I think this is awesome. I did want to get up and ask questions about it because I wanted to give it some time for us to get an idea of what people are going to be able to see down the road. This is exactly the kind of thing that we need, because anyone can just take a picture of a pothole, take a picture of their next-door neighbor's home, which is, you know, full of blight, and, you know, we get those calls, and the mayor's office gets those calls.
And with the GPS, it's going to make it that much easier. I mean, our office gets complaints all the time, and people will call and say, yeah, there's a pothole on Lawler Street. Where on Lawler Street? I don't know. Well, from their phone, it's going to tell you exactly where it is.
So you just mentioned that there will be a GPS component to it. So when you take a photo of a pothole...
You don't even have to know where you are, it'll upload it.
Wow, that's awesome.
So there's also a component to it as well, if I may, that will link into the city's website, and maybe Adam might want to touch on that as well, because it's not just an app, but it can be an interactive tool through our website as well, where maybe if you don't have a smartphone, some people around here that might not have a smartphone, yeah, I'm looking at you. But there's an interactive component that could go with it, too. Highly recommended to check out Bridgeport and New Haven's apps. They are, they're incredible. They really are.
Right. As the mayor suggested, we could embed the user interface into our website, but the big value add, and like Director Moriarty mentioned, is best-of-breed, and what that allows us is a, at the time of contract, they have a user base that's greater than any other. See, the challenge typically for a blight application of any kind is where do you find it? How do you go in? And it's only specific to New Britain. That was the greatest challenge for our blight application. So it's not that somebody would have that application or have that link when they saw the pothole. In this case, because C Click Fix is a premier app, many people already have it downloaded. I forget the number, but it's, you know, very heavily used, and so it's very likely that these people already have it on their iPhone. So with our contract comes that, a big user base, which is a big win. Again, we don't have to go seek our users because the users will come with that contract.
And if they've been around and they've been doing this for other municipalities, they've obviously worked out some bugs with their interface and all their, you know, their technology, so we're not going to be the first ones to experiment with it.
Right. We've been monitoring them for quite some time, since their infancy, and they've grown drastically, and now we believe that they've matured enough, and the product has grown, and it's evolved to something greater than just that. Justin mentioned the reverse 911, there's messaging, we have a parade, that information can be passed along to all those that have, the user essentially signs the location that they want to keep track of. If you're a citizen of New Britain, you just keep track of that location. If you work in New Britain or you travel to New Britain, you assign New Britain as a location of interest. And again, many people have C Click Fix already, whether they live in any town within Connecticut, but if they travel or do business or even live in town, it's to their advantage of, I guess, assigning New Britain to that app. And again, the install base for that application's huge, so not only do we get a premier product, but we get their users already.
And I think I heard, and I just want to repeat, make sure I heard it correctly, the person filing, the person using it and sending in, there's a pothole here, or there's blight over here, they will get a status update on what's going on and how their complaint is being handled, and maybe that's one of the biggest complaints is that, hey, I've called three, four, or five times on this particular property, and no one from City Hall has gotten back to me or whence, or, and in fact, City Hall's working on it, but just haven't gotten to, you know, the home may have been in foreclosure, they're, you know, contacting the bank, and people don't know what's going on because all they see is the blight still at that property.
Right. It is a collaborative tool, and the challenge will be to connect all the other backend tools that the departments use, but it is a single pane of glass for the citizens, so they get all the information and they see the movement of that issue as it progresses within our departments.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. I think this is great. I urge the adoption.
Thank you very much. I name Alderman Sanders.
Thank you, Your Honor. I actually had some reservations about this in the beginning. I had some conversations with Justin and some other colleagues, and we don't get to see Justin at the podium, so I just would like to have you come up for another minute because we talked a lot about, you know, anytime we spend money, we always get concerned, what are we going to get out of it? And I think what my reservation was, we're going to spend $22,000, and what are we going to save? And it turns out, and I'll let Justin speak on this, that there's going to be other programs that we're going to discontinue that this is going to encompass. And the fact, I just learned that our citizens will have that inside window to see, I think, is phenomenal. It's going to show our citizens that our employees are very active and responsible in getting their things done, and getting the feedback is really important because, no, I mean, Mark, Mr. Moriarty doesn't have time to call people back and say, by the way, we fixed your pothole, or we're going there Tuesday. So I think that's phenomenal. If you could just touch base on the other programs that will kind of fall off with the savings that they would show for this would be appreciated.
The big one off the rip is the building, the program that they use. Right now, there's absolutely no access from the public into that. It's all backend, and it's significantly more expensive.
From a viewpoint, it has an anti-blight component that we paid for, and again, we use that component only because it dovetails to the building component. So again, it seemed like it made a lot of sense to have that component to add on to that module, but with it, we didn't get the user base, with it, we don't get the app and the availability of that application. And so it struggles, and the only place you could access it is on the New Britain website. You have to navigate to it. So again, obviously, if you're in the middle of a street and you see something, it's critical that you get that information when it's seen or when it's experienced, and that's the big win when it's a very mobile-friendly app.
Well, last question, if, do we know what the annual savings would be once these other programs are discontinued and this new app?
We don't yet, but we could certainly get that for you.
Okay. And I guess, I know it's going to exceed that.
It's going to end up getting to the tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars because we're paying these yearly fees.
Right, right.
You know, and also, this thing, too, I'd like to point out, you know, $22,000, they originally started at 35, but, you know, through excellent negotiation by the mayor, you got them down to 22,000.
Awesome.
So, oh, that's my train of thought.
If you could just let us know at some point what those savings would be, so we could let people know, I'd appreciate it. But I know it is going to be quite the savings over time, once we initiate this and get this going. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Alderman. Alderman Naples.
Just one point of clarification through you, Your Honor. It might be a misconception. You don't need an iPhone to use this. Any smartphone will work, right? Android phone?
As long as you can download an application. Right. No flip phones. The app is, I will say to you that C Click Fix is continuously growing and changing rapidly as different towns come on with them that have different needs. So we're looking at the C Click Fix app that may actually be able to turn into really a city of New Britain app that can take you to anything, marketing, where to eat, things to do. We could develop it into that eventually as well, so it's got a lot, a lot of potential for us. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Pabon.
I can motion to accept and adopt. This is going to be referred to the licensing committee.
Segundo.
The motion that was made is to accept and refer to the licensing committee. Seconded by Alderman Rosado.
This is for the license for the Puerto Rican club there for the cultural festival on September 9th, and it starts at 7:00 till 8:00 at night, and...
7:00 AM.
7:00 AM, 8:00 PM at night, and that'll be on High Street, and I urge...
Got it. Thank you, Alderman Pabon. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Sanders for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Your Honor. Sorry, I didn't do this at the beginning. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the New Britain Police Department and our town clerk's office for running a very successful rabies clinic at the substation two weeks ago. The staff from the police department and the vet, I don't recall the vet that was there that did this were absolutely phenomenal. They moved the people in and out fairly quickly. There was a huge turnout. New Britain has a lot of dog owners. It was great. I actually used the service myself. It was a good deal. The town clerk got the dogs registered in a very professional and timely manner, so just maybe a quick hand to these two departments for a very job, a good job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Yay, congratulations. A reminder that our last day of school is Friday, and, Smedley, yay, last day of school is Friday, and New Britain High School's graduation will be held at 4:00 in the evening, 4:00 in the evening on Friday. A little bit of a time change, a little bit later. Hopefully, no rain. So we'll see you all there.
Motion to adjourn.